Comes first of the year.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Fort Mill Town Council Regular Meeting for October the 11th. Hope everyone will have silenced their phone for our meeting so we can give our full attention to you. We will stand for our Pledge of Allegiance and then Ronnie, would you bless us? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for another day you've given us. We thank you for many blessings of life. We pray that you be with us tonight, guide us and direct us, give us wisdom to conduct the town's business. We give you the praise and glory for it all. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Council members, you have received a copy of the minutes from our September 27th Town Council Meeting. Are there any changes, deletions, or additions?
Hearing none. I move to accept.
Second.
I have a motion to accept in a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you very much. Public comment. Pursuant to Section 2-46 of the Code of Ordances for the Town of Fort Mill, any citizen of the town may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside of council chambers. Prior to the start of the meeting, citizens will be given three minutes each to speak. And we have one. Jason, is that right? Jason, if you'd like to come to the podium?
He's actually here for the public hearing for the rezoning.
Ah, I take it, John, you are here for...
The event.
The event. So you're not here to make public comment. I got you.
I can.
No, I'm... You can wait. All right. Thank you both. So we have no one here to make public comment. So we'll begin with presentation number one, which is a proclamation. It is for the Planning Department in recognition of Planning Month. Town of Fort Mill, South Carolina, Community Planning Month. Penelope, you'll be in receipt of this for your work and our staff, Community Planning Month. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places. And whereas community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live. And whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And whereas American Planning Association endorses National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight how planning is essential to recovery and how planners can lead communities to equitable, resilient, and long-lasting recovery. And whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of planning commissions and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the Town of Fort Mill. And whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners of the Town of Fort Mill and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the month of October 2021 is hereby designated as Community Planning Month in the Town of Fort Mill in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. This is adopted on the 11th day of October 2021. Penelope, I'd like to thank you and present you with this proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for everything you do to help our community, not just with your job in the town, but with those that volunteer in our planning commission for the 10-year plan that we bring the community in to make recommendations or suggestions. So thank you for everything that you do to help us move forward with the management of planning in the Town of Fort Mill.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council, for always having the support of our staff. And we really... We really appreciate the encouragement that you guys always give the planning staff to be able to do good things for the Town of Fort Mill.
We're lucky to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I think it's important to point out that no one person alone plans for Fort Mill. Our town council sets priorities and policies that our town council, a zoning board, a planning commission, and again, we have public participation in our 10-year plan. We receive plenty of information and suggestions from our community. We take everything into consideration and work through the laws given to us by the state, the county, and our local regions in which and thereby we protect property interests as well as how our town and community grows. So thank you so much. All right. We do not have an executive session this evening, so there are no old business items. So we're going to move to new business items. New business item number one, public hearing. We're going to have a public hearing first. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Town of Fort Mill so as to change the zoning designation for York County tax map number 0200404004 from R-15 residential to LC local commercial. Penelope is our resident expert. We're going to open the public hearing at this time. We're on... Yeah.
I'm primarily here just to answer any questions. I'd also like to thank Penelope and staff for everything involved. And we're just proposing this rezoning to promote a new business, a restaurant, that we'd like to bring to town. So if you're support, we're going to be happy to answer any questions and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much. We love new restaurants and look forward to checking yours out.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right. With that, we'll end the public hearing. And we will have Penelope help us through our first reading.
Yes, ma'am. This is first reading for a rezoning request. The current property... Excuse me. I'm having difficulty tonight. Sorry.
It's Monday.
Yes. The property owner is Wallace Coleman, so the Coleman's Garage. So it was actually zoned R-15, even though many years it's been a commercial business. So the applicant, Durbin Development, is trying to rezone it from R-15 to Local Commercial District. And they are proposing a restaurant, which it's really neat because they're going to be revitalizing this historic building that has always been here in the town and really do a neat design to have a restaurant there. So this property is located at 314 North White Street, across from our park. It's been vacant, the commercial building that was formerly the Coleman's Garage. And so at the planning commission, we did have this and they did recommend approval of the LC district. There was a TIA conducted and there was also a transportation mitigation agreement. There were some improvements that needed to be made. One of the issues in the TMA, or future suggestions, was because of North White Street being a state road and the tendency of people walking from the park to the restaurant, you know, there was a suggestion from the pedestrian bike element improvement of that area to look at a crosswalk. And when they completed the TIA, there's mixed feelings right now currently because SCDOT does not like to do mid-block pedestrian crossing from a safety standpoint. So how they left it in the mitigation agreement is in a future, when there is a need and we need to study it a little bit more as the restaurant opens and we have more activities going on at the park and there's an issue with the crossing of White Street, that's when all three of us will come back to the table. And all three of us is SCDOT, Town of Fort Mill, and the Durbin Development. So currently, and that was one of the things, the planning commissioners, we did have a couple commissioners that wanted to see today a crosswalk. And we staff told them that that is not the town's decision. That is up to SCDOT and that would be at a future matter to look at improvement. And one of the improvements SCDOT may look into is sort of like a median that's like a refuge that people can cross over. But at this time, they're very hesitant to consider a mid-block crosswalk.
How about one at Audrey and Skipper?
That is something, again, once there's a need, they would look at other alternatives. But at this time, to require Durbin to put in a crosswalk, they're not in support at this time.
So can I ask Jason a question? What... How many parking spaces will you be able to have on your property, according to your drawings?
We have 35 right now.
35. And what do you think the occupancy of your restaurant would be?
Uh, I should have that number. I think we are just about... Interior is, I believe, 80... Up to as many as 83.
Okay. So I guess my thinking is I frequent the park, as I'm sure everybody else does, to walk and visit activities that are ongoing. That is not a good section of road. I don't disagree. But I also think that we have other opportunities to have in-depth discussions on crosswalks in the town now. Davy and I have spoken about one on Academy Street that just... We have a lot of people parking down Railroad Avenue and then walking to get to Emmetts or downtown. I think we have need to have a special session to talk about crosswalks and pedestrian walks, Penelope. I know Vic Edwards has spoken once, I think with you, myself, and Christopher. I think it's probably a good idea if we get him to drive up or zoom in. I prefer in-person if at all possible. I think we should really put some effort into thinking in terms of how do we keep our community moving on foot and visiting the places we all enjoy. But that we have... I know as a person that drives the streets, I don't like to have to dodge people that are crossing without a crosswalk or, I don't know, dragging their kids across the street. I think, let's just take a look at it, please.
Yeah, definitely.
Especially there where they use that turn lane as an accelerating lane. People, they're not turning up Old Nation. They're using it to cut in front of everybody else so they can continue eastbound on White.
And we are...
Yeah, that's very...
And we are very close.
We've got people parking at Veterans Park, walking to Walter Elijah. And if they don't know to cross right there at Clayborne, they're going on down into James Point, crossing down at Skipper and Audrey, which doesn't have a cross. So I think...
Which is also a curve.
Yeah, exactly. So I think to the point of, we know there will be walking traffic to this restaurant. I hope so. Yeah, again, see us...
There will be.
Oh, yeah.
So I think, but it is to the mayor's point of bigger discussion as we look at that corridor of park walkability. Our Main Street corridor isn't just Main Street. It pulls all the way to where this will be.
One of the things that we've seen as planners is the divided, like a median refuge. That is working much better than those blinking lights. At least it gives the walker a safe halfway point that they can cross over. Again, you know, as planners, we want to have protective crosswalks and bike lanes. But we want the average citizen to understand because that road is going through Town of Fort Mill, it's not just the town's responsibility, it's also SCDOT. So that's why we left it in the mitigation agreement to have that cooperative, you know, working with the developer and SCDOT and the town to look at it. And I really believe the restaurant's going to be successful, being so close to the park because we've seen even this past weekend how many people have been using that park with events or even during the week. So, I mean, people are not going to want to walk down from the park to go to Clayborne, to cross over, to use a crosswalk and go to the restaurant. But, you know, they want to be a little bit more convenient. We can look into. And that's why we left it in the mitigation agreement to have that open dialogue, to be able to go back to the table with SCDOT.
And I know we've talked with the manager before during our Parks and Rec meeting about the sidewalk itself at Walter Elijah, the one that's right up against the road that's the older sidewalk that's in there. It's very narrow. It's literally right up against the road, needing to be, hopefully being a part of some future improvements for the walkability in that area. So I'm with the mayor. I wouldn't mind a workshop or a session specifically to focus on these items and to include Main Street in it, too.
When you make contact with Vic, would you also have him prepare to talk to us? And no, I haven't asked permission from anyone, about a potential roundabout at the end of Old Nation Road at the park? I think it's appropriate. It would slow traffic but keep it moving. I know people are here are not as adjusted to roundabouts as they are in other places in the country. But the intent of the roundabout is safety and traffic movement. I think it would be a nice entry point into Fort Mill and perhaps would help with the very thing we're talking about.
Yes. And that is a good idea, Mayor, because with that type of roundabout, if you make it as really wide, it puts in pedestrian crossing and that's not that far away from this restaurant. And that was one area when we were looking for that type of crosswalk. It would be safer to the north of that restaurant to put in something.
It would be safe for the restaurant and it would also provide an improved safety to those trying to get on 160 from Old Nation. You just can't do that without being a little bit uncomfortable. So if you would have Vic prepare for that before he comes, that would be wonderful.
Okay.
I know the Town of Davidson has, as soon as you get off of 77, I think it's like 30, maybe 31, they actually have two roundabouts back to back, literally from me to the window, or two roundabouts. But they do have the pedestrian walk-through of the mill, but they actually have a school on one side. So it surprises me how safe it is for them to use that pedestrian through the roundabout, but I think it's a great idea.
Now, does that property... I'm trying to remember the layout of that property and unfortunately, the colored ground we have isn't that good. Does that back up the Greer?
The residential. There's two residential...
I mean, does it straddle... Does it go between both white and... So if you wanted to, could you do an exit out on the Greer?
No.
No, it's outlined the property behind it.
Okay, okay.
Good thinking, but not... I don't think possible. Okay, now that we've amply discussed the pedestrian and crosswalk, do we have any questions for Jason about the business itself or the zoning change for Penelope or staff?
What type of restaurant are you planning there? I mean, or do you know yet?
Or can you say?
Yeah, it's... It could be confidential. We don't know.
For the life of a better moniker, sort of a fast casual, but family-oriented. Come in, get a sandwich, a couple sides, get in and out, you know, and potentially 20 or 30 minutes. But we do want to... We do our planning for a pretty ample outdoor area, patio area that's, you know, safe for kids to play there without, you know, barriers to the roads that people are welcome to stay and visit, hopefully come and go safely from the park and across the street one way or another. We're looking forward to that foot traffic as well.
Yeah, Roco took the old Guff Station in Rockville and made a real nice restaurant out of it.
They sure do. They sure do.
Are we going to keep the Coleman sign up there? You're not leaving Wallace his story?
He will want his own picture, I assure you. Any questions in... Before I call for the motion, any questions on the zoning change?
One thing, just to let y'all know, because this is in the historic district, tomorrow night, we are going through a historic review board for the commercial appearance of it.
Thank you.
And this will fill a donut hole we've had for as many years as I can humanly remember.
Any further questions or comments, council? Then I'll call for a motion for new business item number one.
I make a motion. We approve new business item number one.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much. New business... Excuse me. Go ahead.
It's like, is there something in this new business item, too, I don't know about? Yeah. New business item number two. A resolution accepting the streets within the Springview Meadows subdivision into the Town of Fort Mill Street Maintenance System. Penelope, you're an expert on this item as well. Would you like to guide us through?
Yes, ma'am. The Planning Department received an application for completeness of the streets in the Springview Meadows. This was submitted by Polty Home. It's at 100% built-out, which meets and exceeds the requirements for the street acceptance policy process. Maintenance agreements have been signed for landscape medians and other non-standard right-of-way sections have been completed and recorded by the applicant. Public Works and Utilities Departments have reviewed the roads submitted for acceptance and found them to be in compliance with the town's specification requirements. Should Town Council vote to approve this resolution accepting the streets, the developer would enter into a one-year warranty period during which time they are responsible for any maintenance to the streets. Upon the closing of the warranty period, that's when the town would take over the maintenance responsibilities for the streets.
Penelope, does ownership of the street have any implication on who serves those streets from a police capacity? I see Chris shaking. I'm asking you. Chris, go ahead.
No, it does. I mean, a private street, our police department has limited jurisdiction to do traffic stops, typical traffic control on those streets. There is a process that they can go through, as outlined in state law, which does give our police officers the authority to make traffic stops, but it is a process. And I do not believe Springview Meadows has gone through that process. So as of today, our police officers have limited jurisdiction because it is considered a private street. Once we take over ownership and maintenance responsibility, our police officers have full jurisdiction. And the types of traffic things I'm talking about are speeding, you know...
Kids on skateboards?
To the extent that that's not legal, yes, ma'am.
Well, we have complaints. We have a situation in this area that receives a number of complaints. So in this situation, I would prefer not to take over the streets until we are prepared to take over the responsibility from the police department. So I don't know what the timing is for all of that. But I would prefer not to do the takeover of the streets until we're ready to manage that particular area. I know, that's a real wrench in the whole thing.
So I guess, you know, based on...
But I'm not the only one getting emails.
So basically, I guess we need to get together before the one-year warranty is what I'm hearing to make sure we understand who's responsible to...
It just occurred to me. I didn't think of this before tonight. How long does it take for the police department to take over that responsibility?
It would happen automatically upon...
Acceptance?
Upon our acceptance.
Okay, then never mind. I just want to make sure that we're prepared.
There's a process to go through absent your all's acceptance that can give the police department that authority. So like a brand-new subdivision where you might be several years out, they can go through that process that skips our police department, the authority, sooner rather than later. In this instance, upon your acceptance, it would give them the jurisdiction.
Immediately, right.
Immediately upon your...
And I think it's important to note that in a case where there are activities in your neighborhood that may or may not be regarded by your HOA, that that is your first avenue unless it's a law that's being broken. If you live in a neighborhood in the Town of Fort Mill and you have a homeowners association, unless a law is being broken, you need to refer to that homeowners association by which you pay fees to manage your neighborhood and work with them to resolve those issues. And that covers east, west, north, and south, the whole boundary of Fort Mill. Please do that.
And we do have a great Sergeant Harold. He is... You know, we deal with a lot of emails from HOA. So for the HOA communities, the planners do refer them to Sergeant Harold. And he goes out and takes a look at speeding or other issues. I know we've had that conversation before.
It just... I struggle. We have one of the best police departments on the face of the earth. They are a tremendous asset to our community, not just to the town, but to our community. And if there's an avenue to handle a discussion within your neighborhood with your HOA, it is much more prudent for the rest of the town and our force that you handle that professionally, kindly, with your HOA. I'm asking, because this will be videotaped and carried out, I want everyone in our community to know that's your first step. If there's a law being broken, call the police. But if it's just an issue in your neighborhood, call the HOA. Yes, I'm on my soapbox tonight. I'm sorry.
Oh, I know plenty of communities that use their law enforcement as their HOA enforcer, and that's not good at all.
I know.
So given the comment from the mayor, can we add the police department as part of our checklist prior to accepting roads to make sure they are ready and know it's coming?
We don't surprise them.
I mean, I heard you mention several departments that had checked out on the roads, but making sure the police department is aware, too.
Sure.
And you may already do that.
Yeah, we do. We let them know once they're our roads.
All right. So what I did hear is that they are up to... We have reviewed and they are up to our acceptance criteria. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor.
And that we will work out a one-year warranty on those streets. Do we have any further questions in regards to new business item number two?
The only thing, and Davy, you and I have talked before about it, just making sure line of sight is included as that when we look at some of the neighborhoods, making sure that if there's any trees that need trimmed up so you can see stop signs, all of that. I think the size of this neighborhood is a lot different than mine, but it's still my little soapbox, as the mayor says. You know, I am concerned about the line of sight and seeing stop signs accidentally, Ron. Hope it's not intentional. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments in regards to new business item number two? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion.
Make a motion to accept new business item number two.
I have a motion and a host of seconds. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much. New business item number three. A resolution allowing alcohol and amplified sound for the Hardy Hops Charity Foundation. That makes me smile. Event scheduled for October the 30th, 2021. Davy, you're our expert on this item.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to give a quick overview. The Hardy Hops Charity Foundation is seeking permission for the use of a section of the municipal parking lot located behind Amor Artis in downtown. Foundation is also seeking a resolution for public alcohol consumption and amplified sound for Saturday, October 30th, 2021, from 6:30 p.m. to 10:30 p.m. This fundraiser is for the Hardest Yard and 809 Foundation. The application was submitted by John Elvington. Mr. Elvington is here. He's joined us tonight to answer any questions you may have. But just real quickly, the Hardest Yard Foundation is for families of babies born with congenital heart disease. 809 Foundation exists to further the legacy of Detective Michael R. Doty, who was killed in the line of duty. Details again, the event will actually take place inside Amor Artis. They'll be also utilizing their outdoor deck in addition to the municipal lot for the band and one to two additional tents. The event is for all donations. This event itself was vetted by the Town Events Committee, which is made up of the Police Department, Fire Department, the Events, Public Relations, Public Works, as well as, as I said on that event committee as well, we vet to make sure the event can be run, operated safely. And for this event, there will be asking for a small portion of our municipal lot across the street here. But the actual driveway entrance and the alleyway will be left open as well as parking behind the haircut, the barber shop and Edees. So there will be some available parking in the lot, but a small portion of the lot directly behind Amor Artis will be cautioned. It'd be actually...
Roped off.
Yeah, roped off. And they'll set up some tents and some music out there for that event. It'll only be between 6:30 and 10:30 p.m. on October 30th. So with that, I'll be glad to take any questions. Mr. Elvington, I'm sure can answer any questions you may have. Mr. Elvington, I'm sure can answer any questions you may have as well.
So this one doesn't close Main Street?
This one does not close Main Street. It'll leave actually Confederate Street traffic on it as well.
John, do you plan to take away your own trash and clean the parking lot when you finish, et cetera? So that wouldn't fall to.
We've got trash set up, support. I think we're gonna have Portage Jones or something in the back as well for support, so. And we're gonna actually rent barricades from the local groups, I'll be barricaded off nicely.
Okay. And I'm sure everybody will be on their best behavior. I'm sure everybody will be on their best behavior because with the police department right here, it'd be like fishing in a bear.
It would be. It's a good line of sight.
So is this the first time you guys have held similar event? I know you've had an 809 event before because I was in a Dunkin' bin one time.
Yeah, so this is the first time that we have brought in myself and I spoke to Amore people about doing this. We're brewing a special beer, Hardy Hops, started that last week with its own custom label. So we're planning this to be an annual event, this is our first event, and the response from sponsors has been phenomenal. So we're super excited, so are the foundations that are part of this. So it's been just a welcome, a welcome event from a lot of people.
Council members, do you have questions for?
I have a question for staff. What process do we currently have in place for any group that wants to be using municipal facilities for an event like this? So I know this is, you know, a great cause, great group, but I feel like, especially now that we've got Walter Elijah Park and this opportunity, are we prepared for this to be an ongoing request of various businesses? Are we tying it only to businesses on Main Street? What's kind of the process for this?
The town has an event request form that is filled out by typically businesses, organizations that wanna put together an event in Fort Mill, whether it's in a park or whether it's in a municipal lot. But they have to fill out the form and it's an extensive form. We wanna know exactly what, what the objective of the event is, the logistics needs that they'll have. And then once we find out all of the information from the applicant, we bring it to an events committee meeting and then we, each department in that meeting vets what it would take and the viability of whether we could allow that event, how much staff it would require. And then based on all of our, you know, going through each item, we would determine if, first off, if the location they've requested is available, if what staff would be needed. And then we would be in communication with that event coordinator to let them know if they, if there's any monies that would be due for police protection, for sanitation services. And then we would, we would get that together with them, make sure they understand that first. And if they're in agreement upon that, then that's when we bring this to Town Council if there is any need to close roadways or have amplified sound or alcohol sales. So that's typically the process. We don't have, we don't have that many. We do anticipate having probably more requests for the amphitheater, but right now we're not offering up any, that opportunity at this time. We're gonna rewrite our processes and we wanna bring that before council as well, try to get your, your opinion and on how we move forward with the amphitheater. We really don't have a process for it yet. But for all the other parks, you know, I think the next event coming up is the Doggone Good Time Festival in Walter Elijah Park. It's been put on for a few years now. They go through the same process every year with the application, providing the same information. That's a, really a, a low-impact event on town staff and it works well. It's a limited number of hours, so we've allowed that to take place in Walter Elijah Park. And we will allow them again, I think it's coming up in November, Chris?
Davy, I think, and Lisa, I think what you're suggesting is different. We have looked at events, correct me if I'm wrong, based on an application and we look at our criteria as a first-come basis.
Right.
I think what Lisa's asking is that now that we're broadening the use of our parks and offering new things, we would like to see a policy that would make it easier as we go through those applications. And we make it easier for people to know whether they can ask or not. But not just a rental policy, but a usage policy. So is that, did I do that right?
Yeah, it's all of it. I mean, when we look at this, and while I think this event, again, is a great one, it's a great partnership with a local Main Street business, which is what we want, if it was not affiliated with any business on Main Street that yet was taking up parking places and preventing people to get to businesses on Main Street, would we be as excited about it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's where.
We need to know who we can say no to.
Yeah, so I think, and maybe that's part of that policy that helps that group make those decisions, is in order to give up Main Street parking, it has to be affiliated with a Main Street business that's gonna prosper. But by the same token, is it fair for it to always be the same restaurant when another restaurant may wanna do it too? Again, not all, anything that I can make a decision or give a suggestion, I just feel like it's a policy that needs to be a little bit more ironed out and solid clouded. So when he comes next year, we say, yep, you've checked all the boxes and here we go. Would be my request. The other thing is, what's our current noise ordinance? So I heard it say this is going to 10:30, what's our current cutoff? 10?
I believe it is, it might be 10:00 PM.
We can pull it back to 9:30, which I think is what the flyers are gonna read.
Okay.
6:30 to 9:30 for the ban.
My preference, and again, like this mayor says, one though, is that we try to live within our ordinances that we have, if at all possible. Again, there's 24 hours in a day, we can start partying a little bit earlier. I know people are begging to get there real quick, so my request would be, if we could stay within, but that was not the request put before council, so.
Any further questions? Hearing none, would you like to make the motion that would be modified, we would accept it modified, to stay within the noise ordinance?
I would like to copy exactly what you said. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve new business item number three with the modification for it to be within the standard noise ordinances.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, all those opposed, nay. John, we hope it's a great and successful event and if you can do that within the current ordinance, that would be fantastic.
Chiana's been phenomenal. By the way, she's really teed this up nice, so she's been great to get this, get us here, so I appreciate it.
Yay.
All right, cool, thank you.
Thank you.
See ya.
Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Absolutely. All right, there are no information discussion items for this evening. Trudy, what do you have for the good of the whole?
Well, I'm happy to be back.
Me too, I'm so happy to see you. I know many, many, many people with knee surgeries, so you are, you are setting the standard, my lady. You are doing really well, so we're happy to have you.
Thank you, I'm just happy to be back for so long, well, for so many weeks I couldn't drive and.
You look great.
So, thank you.
You look great, welcome back.
Thank you.
Surgery done wonders for you.
Yeah.
I'm gonna back out of your way here.
Mr. Moody, what do you have for the good of the whole?
I went to, me and my sons went out to the scarecrows yesterday and checked those out for the first time and then went over to your church and grabbed a pumpkin. And so it was good, good to kinda get out and start seeing some of those and it was a good time. Downtown's looking pretty festive this time of year, fall, so that's about all I have, you know.
Thank you.
All good.
Ron, Jamie?
I just agree with Chris, I walked the scarecrows the other day, too, it was awesome. It always amazes me the creativity we have in this town. I mean, every year these people outdo themselves. And I also attended the concert that we had Saturday, that was, that was a great time also. Had a lot of good people out there, we had a band, I mean, she was really good.
Great, Lisa?
Since this is our last nightly meeting prior to elections, just wanted to remind people, we will have Town Council elections on November 2nd, Tuesday, November 2nd. If you are not sure if you live in the town or who you can vote for, I recommend you go into the York County website and you can actually pull up a sample of your voting ballot and see what's on there and start asking questions, start digging into the people that are running and find out more information. But this is typically a low turnout because it's off-election cycle. So highly encourage people, if you wanna have a voice, go vote.
Thank you. To Lisa's point, it has never failed to amaze me in the 17 years that I have been a servant to the town of Fort Mill. It's easy, folks, if you have a green trash bin that's got town of Fort Mill on it, you live within the town limits and you're able to vote in town elections. That's the easiest way I know to put it. If you don't, private carrier, whatever's going on, you live in the unincorporated area. So to Lisa's point, it's really good because some of the voting locations have also changed, I know mine has, so it's a really good idea. Historically, we have had such a low vote count in our community. This isn't a general election year. So I do know there's a forum coming up that you can tap onto on.
Facebook Live.
It's October the 20th, that's being hosted by the Fort Mill Economic Partners. It will give you an opportunity to hear the candidates for the positions here and what their positions, what they think they might be able to bring to the table to help us. So I look forward to watching and listening to that myself. The scarecrows are phenomenal, such a wonderful time of year. It's my favorite, close to my favorite time of year. But it's not just the scarecrows. I love where we've put the corn stalks and the bright orange bows. Our community's beautiful and I thank staff for doing that and making our community. I also, once again, want to say we've had such good turnout for the second Saturday service to collect trash in our community. It's looking so much better, so much better. And that's effort from volunteers and staff. Thank you for caring about our community enough to give up your free time to do that. Davy, it's also time I see leaves in my own yard. Are we running a leaf truck in October, November?
Yes, ma'am, the leaf truck usually starts up mid-October and runs through mid-March.
So mid-October to mid-March, you may place your leaves on the side of the road and a truck will come and suck them up. You don't have to put them in bags, you can put them on the side of the road. I would ask of you, however, if you have a storm drain near your home, don't pile those leaves on top of that storm drain, please. We, then we'll have problems with runoff and water in the street. So use care, we want to help keep our community beautiful. Please find a way to log in and look at what the policies are that might help us all do so. Chris Sardelli, thank you for posting so much on our website and our Facebook. Farmer's Market has been wonderful, the event Saturday was well-attended. And I think we're, we're making headway in keeping the quality of life exactly where our community hopes it will be. So thank you all, staff, for doing what you do to make it so much fun to live in Fort Mill. Thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, all those opposed, nay. All right, thanks so much.